I do want to, I am trying to. They, uh. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order tonight and you will please stand in.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We welcome everyone here tonight. Ms. Pearson is homesick tonight, so anyway, I had to be here to everyone. You have before you the agenda for today's board meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. Now at this time, we'll have our recognition part. Dr. Ken Jarnigan, our principal at Spain Park High School, will recognize two of our outstanding student athletes. Dr. Jarnigan?
Thank you. Tonight, it's my pleasure to introduce two of our students from Spain Park. They are not only outstanding athletes, they're outstanding young men and women, and they're outstanding students. Madeline, Will, if you'll come up, so I can brag on you while you're in front of everybody. These are folks that we certainly want going out of our school system in a few days to represent us as a product of Hoover City School, not only athletically, but academically and socially. They are gonna be leaders in our community, and we are very, very proud of them. But specifically tonight, I want to confirm an award that's previously been presented to them, and they've been through all the pufla. In fact, we call it a full school assembly just for these two students to recognize them one day. The Heisman that we've all experienced here, living in Alabama, you know a little bit about the Heisman Award, but there's also a high school Heisman Award, and it encompasses not only the athletic part of a student as the real Heisman Award does for colleges, but it looks at the person that they are, their community service, and their academic posture as well in their school system. So, we are very proud to be represented by these two students. The way this system works is, out of each state, there's a young man and a young lady that are chosen. So, this is the first time in the history of this Heisman Award that both the young man and the young lady have been chosen from the same high school in the state. So, they were our nominees for our school, and then they went on to win the state contest as well as the Heisman recipients for the state of Alabama. And before you break into applause, Will then took this one notch higher, as he does, and moved on actually to be one of six national finalists, the male, and got to go to New York and be part of the Heisman presentation. So, tonight, I present to you Alabama and the national representative, Ms. Madeline Hill, and Mr. Will Freeman. Will, when I was out there at the schoolwide assembly that Dr. Jarnigan referenced, I looked into some trouble and was trying to convince you that there's protocol for you to take the principal with you to New York. I didn't succeed in that.
No, he did not.
He drives that around here too.
A lot of my plans don't work out.
Do you have the minutes from the regular board meeting of December the 9th, 2013? Do I have a motion to approve these minutes, please? Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Now to the personnel report. I believe Ms. Bill said we have some additions. It'll take a few minutes to recover the additions that are involved. Do you have any questions or comments from Ms. Bill? Any comments, questions? She is here.
Mary.
Yes.
Is this not unusually large number of midterm appointments? Are mid-year appointments usual?
Well, several are the grant-funded ones, so we've listed those under the area. Plus, our extended day program usually has a lot of turnover mid-year.
Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The personnel report is approved.
The personnel report is predicated upon the superintendent's recommendation as set forth in the personnel report itself.
Yes, sir.
We make reference to Mary Bill, but it is the superintendent's recommendation that these people.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. President, would you take a moment? Mr. Will is going to introduce, would like to introduce to us his newest administrative team member, Mr. Brad Hain.
That's what we're basically trusting, like Brad, he's part of our team. He comes with a wealth of experience from the program, like Ms. Bill's assistant principal, and unfortunately, he gets to do his life work now. So, he's stepping in that position that vacated by Tim Smith, so Brad Hain, glad to have him on board.
I want to thank you for the opportunity, and I'm excited to be a member of Hoover City Schools and specifically of the high school. Well, Mr. Will, it's a fantastic opportunity, and I'm excited about the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. John Latta, thanks for joining us tonight.
Very welcome.
Next, we have our business items. It'll take a few minutes to look over the business portion of your agenda. Any comments or questions?
Do you have this question, 4.3 percent more than the pair of periods in 2013 on general fund expenditure?
Um, yes, that's what we probably can increase in the salary increase by 2 percent rise. It was feeling as well as the increase in retirement, just to see if we left the figures.
Any other questions or comments?
What else included in special revenue?
Special revenue would be anything that would be related to basically federal programs. It could be, um, our extended day operations would be included in special revenue. That would be the whole, but CNP programs included in special revenue.
Anything else, Mr. Cooper? The superintendent is recommending that the board approve the business items. Do I have a motion to approve the business actions?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The business actions are approved. Next on the agenda is the proposed 2014-2015 school calendar. Ms. Green is here tonight. Do you want to make any comments regarding the school calendar? I know you all spent a lot of time on this.
I'd just like to say that we have a terrific calendar committee. They took it very seriously. They went through all of the possibilities methodically and had great discussion. The overriding question that we posed every time was what is best for students, what is best for students? And they believe that this calendar that they are proposing has the most advantages for the students of Hoover with respect to a learning, a positive learning environment.
Any comments or questions regarding the proposed 2014-2015 school calendar?
Thank you for your work on this. I mean, you know, you push it one side of the balloon, it pops out the other. You can't make everybody satisfied, so the whole notion about kids trying to finish school before is more of a important thing in my mind, so. It's not so much a tough job to do to write a package, I guess.
True.
Ms. Green, did you say we had over 200 responses?
We had over 200 responses in parent feedback. We answered every one of those. We responded to every parent feedback, hopefully none of them slipped through the cracks, but the responses were all very constructive and suggestive, and people understood when we would reply back and say, answer their questions. Hopefully, with very few exceptions, we have a calendar that will benefit our community.
There's no other questions or comments? The superintendent is requesting that recommend that we approve the 2014-2015 school calendar. Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? School calendar is approved. Next on the agenda is information reports. Mr. Greg?
First of all, I'm sure you've got some exciting news. I think the football team at Ohio.
Yeah, very much so. I think very well deserved, and mainly, I think the school national champion of the year. And we'll celebrate that at the bowl game on the 20th, you know, open that. Great, great news. Our guys and our staff did come out this year and well deserved.
Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, it's the USA Football Riders Association, they voted for sports riders on East Coast and throughout, actually, the Southeast also. And they, at the conclusion of all of the state championship games across the nation, they award an overall champion, you know, for the public school side. John Bosco's put up in New Jersey, and that's quite an honor.
Yeah, it's quite an honor, not only to the district, to the school, but for all the 100-plus kids, and coaches, and everybody. And if anybody has questions about what athletics or extracurricular activities does for kids in their lives in terms of preparation for the future, that's a question.
It's very hard for our kids, and I feel, thank you.
Secondly, and lastly, we have some time now given, give a considerable thought to the initializing of a strategic planning process, a process that would marry community values and devices for the system into a strategic direction, strategic investment looking forward. We've had similar processes in the past. We had, I think, one that you participated in, Mr. Cooper, in 2004, and it was successful, and it was quite effective.
That was a resounding point.
Well, it was similar, I say similar in nature, because there were aspects of that. I could perceive envision being part of this in terms of possibly using a market research-based type firm to gather the data that would drive some of the decision-making, some of the process. We also, in 2009, did a similar process. This is more financially based. The first one, as you mentioned, is more zoning based. I kind of see this one as being quite broader in scope, potentially touching on those various things and integrating them into a strategic direction at this point. That process is currently in the design phase, I would say, and my hopes is we could bring you a minimum conceptual template at the February board meeting. It's kind of a basis to proceed.
How long do you think it takes on the whole?
The design piece or the development process? I think that'll correlate most closely with scope. Given the, all the variables in place, like I said, I would potentially expect this to touch on the zoning piece as well, kind of related to that capital, capital investment piece. Integrating all those, I would say that it could be pretty lengthy. I think even the design phase, I would think designing those tools to gather that, gather that feedback, that value set within, trying to integrate that into the process. I hate to speculate, Mr. Cooper, I want to design it right and implement it. But the underlying concept is to certainly incorporate that force into that process.
So, what you're saying, I guess, there's a lot of words in your mouth, but incorporate people across the community to be involved in the planning process as well. Concept.
I'm sorry, you can't hear me.
That, yeah, that value set, you know, when you look at the process, the components to gather that data, they were, I think, the ones, and not that this one wouldn't necessarily incorporate that, that's in the initial design phase, but there were published groups, there was New South Research that we had success with in our surveys that were passed. Luckily, they were doing, they were involved in the process too, to, I think there was a calling process to gather feedback, trying to get that cross-section to, and get the, really get the value set that would incorporate into some of the decisions that would ultimately result in a strategic plan, a strategic direction.
I believe in zoning, we talked about having probably 300-plus parents engaged in that process. How would this, how would this process look? Would it be inclusive? How would the selection process look like, and how would the communication plan look as well?
It's still very much in the design, I was just wondering, part of what you described is, was the piece that was, that had gathered the piece, you know, the folks that actually served on the local committee, and the first example, two out of four example, I think it was maybe 30-ish, Mr. Cooper, do you remember?
It was over 30.
I think when we did our task force, I think we had probably, I'm gonna guess 35. I don't remember, but it just over tried to establish cross-section representation. And, you know, I would see this kind of, maybe have similarities to both of our processes. And we'll need to sit down and, you know, determine, determine really how much risk we want to fly off. I would suspect to truly get a direction that incorporates all the variables and appropriate feedback, I would expect, I would expect to take on all those processes.
We had great success with the one that was initiated in 2009. It's pretty much an independently operated strategic planning process, produced great results, and a lot of hard work and parts of people, particularly in the community. So, I think it's a great idea. Do you see, is that, is this gonna roll into this?
I think it's awesome. I see it being, being, being the whole equation. Last time, it was more of a financial base, which I would just see that being part of this too. But at some point in the process, last time, the committee broke off into kind of functional areas. They reviewed, for example, I think one of them was high school, not staffing, but the high school processes, high school, that's where they examined, you know, the five-period versus six-periods, teacher workload, kind of those kinds of things. So, I would see that, you know, that possibly being part of it too, that kind of functional approach. But I think we also need at this point to incorporate kind of the capital investment looking forward, tied to various enrollment assumptions as well as enrollment assumptions.
I think it's a great idea, because when you involve the community, and what you described there, the whole notion of cut costs, you know, impact some programs, some activities, some extra proof of some not, and, you know, it's a great way of getting a fuller understanding of what the implications are of what people think they want or don't want to do, or just cut costs.
And I would hope that there'd be some focus on potential revenue, I guess, as well. As far as I was gonna say earlier, it's a taken multiple passive approach, and I hope that that, those kinds of discussions announced before.
In 05, 09, was the city leadership engaged into that discussion as well?
I don't think there were, I remember, Mr. Cooper, there were, there were assignments of way of representation on the committee, how it was selected, and I'm not necessarily saying that's the way that they do this, but it's still a design phase, but I think there were slots in that case granted to city administration, and I'm going off of, I'm going off the name there, Mr. Murphy, so.
Mr. Greg?
No.
Any new business?
Do you have that on the question?
Mr. Schwain and I have both been in, I think the dialogue is advancing, and at this point, no determinations or decisions have been made, but the dialogue I would say is going.
We stay in communication with the pertinent people there, making sure that they have the data that they want, as they are looking over information. If there's anything else that they need, we want to make sure that it's given to them promptly and thoroughly. So, they've really been cooperative at this point, so I think the ball's moving forward.
Any other new business? Thank you, Mr. Greg. At this time, do we have any public participation? Mr. Senior?
I'm not gonna stand over here so that everyone can see me. Appreciate it. I, I won't be addressing the board, but I'd like to give a take.
We would also like to see him.
I've been getting a lot of compliments about my shirt, so I don't want to.
It is a good thing, though.
Thank you very much, and happy new year, all. I am very, very pleasantly surprised and happy to see that there will be a work session, and a three-hour work session at that. Could you give me some ideas for what's gonna be discussed at the work session?
It'll focus on instructional issues, curriculum issues, vision associated with that. Dr. Adams, would you summarize that well enough, or she'll be far in that as well?
As part of looking forward, the curriculum and instruction team has been working on developing a very targeted, focused look at particularly the next five years. And, you know, you have to plan ahead when we're getting graduating classes coming up. They start in ninth grade, they need a particular set of expectations as they get ready to complete their high school years for the rest through 12, so it takes planning in advance. And I wanted to share some of the ideas, we'll come get your input on some of the ideas for encouraging leadership, both with students and with teachers, developing talent within the district. And at the same time, helping our students make good decisions about whether they're going to college or whether they're going to be more career-focused upon exit from high school. So, there's just different changes coming from the state and the early plans for our students, so we wanted a chance to share that with you.
Concorde will be part of that discussion as well?
It will. The Alabama College and Career standards will be part of that discussion.
See, as part of that discussion, you may not, I think I'll be part of the agenda, but I'm lucky to explain the data-driven approach to student enrollment.
Yes, we can do that. In fact, our worry would be that we're giving too much information.
No, no, I think, it's an important process that has to be done technically in order for things to really increasingly turn to the performance.
Well, I appreciate that you have ears to listen, because we'd sure like to hear that from you. So, we will have all that when we.
I've heard a little bit about it.
And, and that, the board session will take place in this room?
Yes.
Okay, and the public can sit in and listen?
Absolutely.
And there may or may not be public comments allowed, but that's up to, up to the board. Because I, yeah, I understand typically work sessions are the public listens, but there's always the option to have some participation. Thank you, you know, thank you on that, and I'm really looking forward to it. It's a, it's a great start, and I look forward to one hour work sessions in the future to, to prepare for, for the public meetings. Now, separately, I'm also glad to hear about the program that is in the planning stage for community participation. And in that regard, I would strongly recommend that each of the board members, as individuals, and I stress, as individuals, attend, just as Councilman Lightfoot did last night, is very much like going to college. To come to a, to come to a lecture and not have done the reading and not have done the preparation leaves you less able to absorb everything that's being given. So, if you could think of what we're trying to accomplish as a reading list, as a listening, and as a questioning, we truly, truly welcome you, because this is how we can establish dialogue as a community. Okay? Love to that. Now, a public information request. Several years ago, when we had the. Several years ago, when we had the electricity, electricity control system, and you recall, Mr. Cooper and Ms. Fraser, I had some questions on it. Gary McVay, at that time, provided me with a year's worth of bills from Alabama Power. And we were able to do some analysis. I think since several years has passed since then, I would appreciate if I could get a year's worth of bills for each of the schools, similar to what we had in the past, together with the square footage then and the square footage now. For example, Hoover High School now has more square feet than it did then. So I want to be able to, you know, do the comparisons. And again, this is part of the data gathering to help everyone, to help the community. So I'll be giving the, the email request of what I just spoke about. I'll be sending that to Jason Gaskin in the morning. Thank you very much, and you'll see we have to get.
When you, when you can do that side-by-side comparison, be sure, make sure that things, whether normalized comparisons, and factor in to the equation, how many new students, how many students live mid, leave midstream, how many classes are. There's a whole load of things a side-by-side comparison shows.
Well, that, that would be interesting, except I didn't have that data for several years ago. If, if that data could be provided to me.
It's not available, but what I'm saying is if you take the side-by-side, numbers-to-numbers comparison, you won't come up with apples, apples will be apples to breakthrough.
We, we, we can do, we can do an adjustment of calories per student, maybe that'll work out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight?
Hi, I'm Hannah Jacobal. I have a son that graduated Hoover High in two thousand nine and a daughter currently enrolled at Simmons. And I do want to thank you all again for saving our buses. And I kind of got a feeling of answering a couple of these questions, but the D O J are still going on. Is that correct? How can we, how do we get access to the requests from the D O J and what material has been supplied to the D O J?
Oh, Mr. Craig can provide the information that was provided to them. Much of it has specific student names, information that.
Would need to be redacted.
Or, or at least redacted. Some of the stuff potentially would be identifiable even after reflection, so we'd have to do that.
Okay, so is that a request I should go through, Jason?
Please.
Okay. Perfect. And, and you could also kind of touch the long-term questions. I wanted to find out how parents can become a part of these ongoing discussions. What values of community are and how they can be replicated and reinforced through our school, funded through, reinforced through our schools? Will parents need to come to the central office to volunteer? Or will there be an online application where parents will be able to apply as a part of these committees?
No, it's really in the design phase. The, the input potentially will be gathered in different ways, whether it be through survey, whether it be just a special focus group, if, if that's part of, if that's a component of it. I suspect there will be ultimately at eighteen that we'll meet. If there, in the past, when we've done that, the information and feedback has been gathered and took the variety that was, but it's against the team design value that, that information we put in.
Okay, well, I mean, I'd like to suggest an online process. I also want to suggest what we found successful as for the Hoover buses was a variety of meeting times and days so that everyone could participate. People who work weekends may not be able to come to meetings on a weekend. People who work during the days may not be able to come during the day. People who work in the evenings. So having a variety of input, meeting times and days is extremely helpful. Also, I just wanted to find out if any of you saw, reviewed, read about, because I know unfortunately none of y'all were available to come to the meeting last night. Have you taken a look at what was discussed last night? Mr. Singer, is that information to ma'am? Sure, he probably sent it to the rest of already. Okay, great. And do you have any reactions to it or any suggestions where we could perhaps focus our interest more? Or is there more, have these one here? Is there more financial information that perhaps online we could get access to, to be more accurate in what we're discussing? Or have any comments?
Which piece you talking about, Stipend, please?
Pardon?
Which piece you talking about, Stipend, please?
All of them, all of them, whether it's the supplements or whether it is just all of the lineups. Because we are working with a very high level amount of information. And to really benefit everybody, it would be better if we could dive in and find out like exactly what, like you asked for explanation today, what was included in a particular lineup. So for us to, you know, because we're, we're a big group of good people, smart people, and we all have different insights, but in order to give an accurate assessment, we would need to know exactly what is contained in our lineup.
I think it's important to keep in mind that active assessment based on numbers and financials. It's an interesting piece, it's a data-driven piece, the numbers are, the numbers are. But I will say there's a lot more to that than just numbers.
Such as?
Such as a delusion, Mr. Hewitt. You can say pay too much for football, whatever you want to talk about in terms of extracurricular activities. But when you talk about the benefits to students, you talk about preparation for students, you're talking about offerings to differentiate this school district from somebody else anywhere over the mountain or beyond. You can't quantify that necessarily, in doubt. So, I'm rushing to say we're going to cut here, cut there because it's going to have implications at the student level that hasn't been addressed.
Understood, understood. But I also know that the majority of the boys that graduated with my son in two thousand nine, who were on the football team, are no longer in college. So there is more to every aspect of this.
Your point is?
My point is preparation for the continuing life. I'm not going to, I'm not sinking down. Okay. We fully understand that there are other ramifications with any type of cut or decrease of incomes. So on that note, what are the long-term plans to repay our thirty-two, three hundred and twenty-five million dollar debt?
We've got amortization schedule and debt service schedule, and we're going to honor that commitment. I didn't notice three hundred and twenty-five million, I'm not sure what it is, but is that much?
It is, we're giving numbers.
Is that, is that a add-up to annual payment?
It's annual payments and interest and.
So it's principal and interest.
So it's fairly accurate.
Well, not, not if you were talking about the principal and not, which most time when you talk about loan balances, that's what you're talking about. I'm not going to preempt, we got, we got a process, we got, we got our sides on process and I'm not going to preempt that process, I'm going to make these decisions. The study analysis is going to actually be out of that, so I'm not going to preempt that with decision by way of issue to be cut or shouldn't be cut or issue to analyze, I think we need to call them.
So we're going to have a study before we decide what to cut?
We're going to, we're going to go through the strategic planning process, just like we described earlier.
Okay, that's wonderful, thank you.
My name is Lisa Singer. I'm a parent of a current Spanx Park senior and a lone child out of Rico, the Spanx Park in a year's time. I have been part of the group working on both the effort to save the buses and the budget group that's been trying to come up with some different ideas for the schools to make the cuts that need to be made to balance the budget. And I'm very interested in this process, you're talking about strategic planning. And I would like to ask the board that some people who have already been so involved in this process of looking at what's involved in our school budgets and systems and be, be included in this process. We've already, many of us devoted a long time to this. It's something that we feel we're invested in and we would like to be part of that process.
Very much in the design phase and you can certainly send me requests to be, I'll, I'll accumulate those once we determine how that will be comprised, how it will be selected, how the feedback will be gathered, we'll certainly consider that.
Can you, I'm, I'm, I'm really not clear, you were talking about, you said it's a long-term process, about what would be the, the longest kind of go for? Are you looking at something that would help to start reducing the budget deficit in years, in years' time, or are you looking way further down the road?
That, that will be a common, a discussion. We're in a, we're in a situation now where we have a very strong balance sheet. We finished the most recent fiscal year with just under eight millions of reserve in our base operating funds, that's eight times what the state recommends. But the outlook is not so, so good. So we're, on, on one hand, we're, we're blessed to be in a position to be able to, to be out in front of that and be able to methodically look at ways to reposition ourselves. So, so I think it's, it's a good thing that we can, we can spread that out and not try to, not be in a position where if we lived from paycheck to paycheck, we would absolutely have to balance a budget next year. To some extent, there, there will be some, some, within that base operating funds, there will be some debt spending because we received a lump sum, a lump sum that was financed by, on the surface, a twenty-year sales pack. So by virtue of the way that money flowed, there is going to be some level of debt spending. It's the pace of that debt spending.
Right, so until that money runs out, and then we're forced to deal with a whole lot less money. So we're looking at stepping down because of the deficits, but we're not suddenly going to cut seventeen million dollars in one year. So I guess what I'm asking is, is this process going to help get part of the way for this next budget year?
Certainly that will be, that will be part of the process and that's good.
And I, I have a question.
Next, one quick question. So will the process begin a lot further before money's evaporated?
It certainly helps, uh, beginning now, definitely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
When do you anticipate a group like that starting? I know it's still in the design phase, but do you have a general timetable for when it would start?
I do not. I'm in, I'm in the design phase, so we've got meetings scheduled to talk about that, talk about the scope, to talk about what, what data gathering methodology we may use within that scope. So this is, again, it's, it's in the design phase, that's what I can do at this point. I hope to bring that to the board, at least a conceptual template of that in the next board meeting.
Thank you. I also had a couple of quick questions about the situation with the buses. When you said that there, there's ongoing dialogue, it was a little unclear to me. You're talking about the dialogue within Department of Justice?
That, that's, that was my, that was my response.
Well, no one ever said who it was with, so I just wanted to clarify, that's what I was talking about, but. So it is still being discussed that a fee may be charged for bus service next year?
That is correct.
And is there, has there been any discussion, any numbers put forth as to what kind of fees you might be looking at? We've discussed a number of times here that parents are in the planning phase now of trying to figure out can they afford to be here and make this work with their families next year? We have people who are pretty nervous about it and, you know, are, are there any numbers being discussed?
Nothing's been submitted as far as this point regarding discussions about fees, about potential structures, or nothing besides that.
And we did note, some of us note that, that you were looking to hire more bus drivers for some of the ones that had been lost. And there was some question about whether bus drivers who had been in our system and left had been asked to come back, many of them left because they felt they had a lack of job security, but, but were happy working here prior to that and just, they were good experienced bus drivers that, you know, knew our kids and some of those, those people would be asked to come back.
We'll, we'll go through our posting procedures, I'll go out best candidate.
My name is Trish Crane. I'm here with the Ring Bell area.
Speak up, Trish, please.
Yeah, is this on? Hello? Um, I, I would like to brought the posting thing up because I had a question that I didn't know, I didn't know who to ask of this. I know that we have a new assistant principal and I had been, and I know that Robin Wannaker has now retired as of December thirty-first. And I have been waiting, I've been watching, you know, when are we going to hire a new principal for Trace Crossing? When are, I never saw a job posting for assistant principal. And so you say that we're going to go through the posting procedures. Is there ever any exception to that that is allowed?
There's various, various things under Students First Act where reassignments can take place, lived or without work, depending on circumstances. But we certainly feel like we live in law in that, in that situation.
So is Carol Barber the principal of Trace Crossings at this point?
She was this morning.
Okay, still is, okay. And, and has she been principal of Trace Crossing since the day you went out there? That was delineated in the, in the newspaper, whatever that was, November the whatever. Was there ever any interim period where Carol Barber was not principal?
I'm not sure of all, but she's, she's served as principal, whether, whether it's technically on an acting or interim or whatever basis, Carol's the principal.
Okay, but did y'all ever approve a board action that said she was a principal?
Uh, don't believe so. But there's, you know, there's various reassignments you can do within Students First, so being kind of, I don't know.
Traffic study question. I know we were doing a traffic study, I think it might have been maybe called Skipper Consulting, because I found a check in the check register for like twenty-nine hundred dollars in November, I think it was. I've sent an information request, that's one of those information requests, asking for the invoice that went along with that check. Can you give us an update on the traffic study, where it stands, will it be completed at this point?
It's, it's ongoing. Again, the same, they're doing the work, they're evaluating, an attempt coming up with circulation plans, it's progressive.
Okay, and along those lines, not knowing that there, whether or not there will be a fee for families, is there, are they taking that into account that, you know, if we come up in April and say, hey, y'all, it's going to be fifty dollars a month, there will be families who do have options that will choose not to ride the buses and therefore we don't really know, like it's how, how do you plan for that if you don't know what the fee is and you don't know what you're riding?
They're making assumptions about ridership, I would say that at this point analyzing that on the, on the, the most impactful basis assumption, so they proceed.
Make assumptions regardless, I mean, you gotta make assumptions on the result.
Oh, exactly. You know, and I know Jason and I have talked about how one year my apartment complex shut down and all of a sudden Rocky Ridge had a hundred more students, you know, and that was completely unknown. I, I just, this, this would be something new for Hoover. I think we have a lot of traffic and I think there's reason to still be concerned. You know, I know that you made a, a statement at the last board meeting that the model that you're looking at is to employ our own bus drivers. Is there assurance that that model will hold true? Can you, it, it, because what I heard you say, you know, on July fifteenth, y'all said there would be no buses, and on December ninth, you said there would be buses, and on July fifteenth, you said there would be no bus drivers, and on December ninth, you said, yes, we think that the model that we're thinking about right now would involve having our own bus drivers. Are there assurances that the bus drivers will be employed by Hoover? I mean, are we looking at prioritizing at all at this point?
Not that I know, not that I'm aware of. But there's potentially, we have started a process where we potentially contract vacancies, perhaps like long-term leaves, potentially, but the base model would be. I can't imagine it'd be that way forever, but that's, that's what we're.
And I do want to say, while I was disappointed about seeing somebody there last night, we did stream it live, we can stream, so you can go back and look at the video. Something I hope that Mr. Gaston will employ for y'all's board meetings at some point. I have spoken to y'all for a long time, sometimes on friendly terms, sometimes not so much. And I want you, I hope that you will be open to the idea that I have been extremely impressed with the caliber of people that stepped up when the call was put out. Hey, you know, we took our direction with the student agenda, who said, y'all might want to step up and offer your own solutions because sometimes the people who are making the decisions have run out of solutions. And so, we took that seriously and we did a whole lot of digging. And I think what you hear in questioning about the process, I've seen as many processes as you have, and the people who end up on these committees tend to be those that are either on PTO, attend church with one or more of the board members, or are somehow already in the inner circle. And Hoover is a really big white place now, there's some awfully good people that bring a lot of different perspectives to the table. And I hope that you will ensure that when you get going towards this process, that even if you only have a table for fifteen, that there's always a place for public input and public discussion. Because you can do that, you know? We used to have work sessions where after each discussion item, y'all would ask for public input. I hesitate to say those were the good old days, but there was this feeling of mutual two-way communication. I hope that we can restore that. I think we can get there if we just sort of maybe silence each other a little more and understand that we all love children and that we really want the best for our community. So, I just want to ask you, please keep your mind open to the folks. What, what you see oftentimes standing at this podium is frustration. You know, we don't have access to the same information y'all do. When I learned how to hack, I'm armed, but I don't know how to do that yet. So, but I don't have access to the same information. They don't have access to the same information. So, you know, I think information can clear a whole lot of this stuff up and I'm looking forward to seeing Mr. Gaston draft a wonderful communication plan to roll out and tell us all about this fabulous strategic planning process that you're going to be engaging. Yes, sir.
You brought a good point. I mean, that, I'm pretty excited about what he's proposing here. Haven't seen the structure, so that may be seen, I'm pretty confident it's going to be great. The thing I would caution you guys, if you're cautioning us about various things, is you've got tremendous amount of data you've accumulated over a number of years, and it's great, and you are a master of scrubbing those numbers and looking at all that. But what I found out, for myself at least, is that, alluded to this minutes ago, is within those numbers, within those thoughts, and within those things that seem so blatantly obvious because it is data, it is black and white, it is numbers, there are numbers, are the implications. And when we go back and we say we all love kids and the whole thing is focused on students, it's really, really difficult to start peeling back the onion and see what impact it really has on kids. You can say your kids, just on graduating, a whole bunch of kids going to go to college, everybody's not going out for college, that's why, at least, they're on workforce development and career gap as opposed to four-year college prep. And we're moving in that direction too. So, we're trying to broaden the umbrella for every kid as much, as much as we can.
May I respond to that?
Just a minute. And that is, look for the implications. And it's going to be, it's hard to find those implications unless you've got broad-based community input and all that, you know, piece of also a catch with a strategic plan.
Absolutely. And I think it's really important, you know, I think whenever we produce a document, y'all have done it, we've done it, I've done it, you've done it, we produce a document and people pretty much do with it what they want. They interpret it the way they want to. It's very, very, very important to understand that that document, that genuine data is not here, that's it. It's not here, we need to reduce that. What we did, it's important to understand what our task was, which was, where is money doing its dance? Particularly, I mean, salary, college, personnel, budget practices. We've not talked about that one for a long time, right? So, there are various areas that we start looking at. And what I really liked about this process was, it wasn't something I made up, by the way, but what I really liked about this process was, it can pass funding to task forces, and truly no disrespect intended, because most school districts do it this way. They say, let's produce a couple of pages of information with the information that we want to share with the community. And then they say, here, play with these cards. And what we did was different in that it was, here's all the information. Go dig around, see what you can find. And to trust, I don't know that that trust exists.
Well, but see, what you just said is true, but you've got nailed the what. You don't nail the who, when, why, how much. That's where the, that's where the bigger picture has to come into play. And take what you had in terms of that included in some context.
And that is, that's why I wanted everybody to get together and talk about it, you know? I mean, we didn't do it just because we didn't have anything else to do other than speaking.
I was going to say this right now to someone there, and that is, we wanted the same thing for those public meetings, but we didn't exactly sit there and talk about it. Now, and that was a little bit disturbing, I think, for most of us sitting here at this table. We sit there and take the feedback and the comments and the things that were not very pleasant.
I like, can you clarify? I don't know what you mean.
Yeah, because we asked for answers and we're never given them.
We've got a protocol that we expect to follow, and if you don't follow that, you can be excused, we'll be in recess.
I don't know what you mean. What are you, what are you saying, that you wanted to have dialogue with us?
Well, I mean, the whole thing was meant to have community input and dialogue. It was almost blasphemy at the points, and then, and I don't.
Do you understand why people were frustrated, you know, today?
Well, I understand we were frustrated enough to say, because they didn't have all the information, no one ever has all the information, and I think that's fine. Everybody cannot have all the information all the time.
But you guys sit in the seat where the decision is made. See, I mean, it's, we are subject to your decisions, right? I mean, you guys pass the budget. I came to your meeting, remember? I had my case. Came to you and I said, hey, y'all, when y'all are looking over your budget, can you make sure that resources are allocated appropriately to make sure that all the kids have resources, right? That's what I basically came and said. I said I'd get on my knees, you know, and beg you to do so. Two months later, a decision is made that quite frankly blindsided me. You and I spoke that evening, okay, about it. And so, what happened was, I mean, it's a textbook case of this bad decision being made that upset a large portion of the community. I understand half the folks wanted it, but half the folks didn't. And so, what you saw was a textbook case of a community frustrated and wanting some dialogue, you know? I mean, I'll, we'll meet and I'll let you listen to the audio tapes of the meetings that we've had. It wasn't that we weren't, there was no opportunity to dialogue.
I got that. But what I'm telling you though, is it's impossible for that guy down there to share with you confidential discussions he's having with a third-party provider trying to see if that's a viable alternative. He can't do that.
We'll have to disagree, agree to disagree.
You know, you're not entitled to all the information all the time, you're just not, you know?
And I understand that, that has been your stance since day one.
Right, you have to be taken place. I wouldn't involve in those discussions either, I never met the people. Because we don't, we don't make decisions, we respond to recommendations that ultimately turn into decisions.
You know, I'm excited that we're moving forward with this strategic planning and also having a work session, I think that's a start. And I think, you know, we are committed, not only love kids, but love the city as well. So, I'm excited about that and I think that, I believe that we will have some great dialogue. I do believe it will be a, more so of a community engagement on all sides. And that's what I'm hoping for.
It'll be a big process.
Yeah, it'll be, you know, it'll be several, you know, months of, obviously.
I appreciate that, and I believe you.
Just, just, just me, here was going on, and we'll have a great meeting on the twenty-third. Three hours, talking about the common core and so many other factors.
Awesome, agree with that.
Yeah.
Talking about the authority.
Yeah. Okay.
And I appreciate that, and, you know, we'll, we'll have to have a coffee, right? But.
Long as you're buying this time.
I'll, I'll, this time, anyway. I do appreciate it, I just, I, you know, guys, these are great people out there, they're just upset. They, when you're, when you're the one, it's like being the child. It's like when, you know, I tell my son, well, actually, I've never told him he can't go out, but, you know, if I told him he couldn't do something, you know, when you don't have the decision-making authority, it is frustrating, and I know y'all understand that. I want to see, I've been a part of healthy dialogue with the organization. I think we can get there if we commit, we'll all, we'll all be smiling more after, you know, after fans. No, no, but we, you know, we really do, we can, we can start this thing over. I've just taken way too long up here, I didn't really mean to, but I appreciate you really being able to respond to my questions. And I look for further, the dialogue, thank you.
It's Trish, could I just mention something in response to what Mr. Crane says? Our commitment, our position with the Justice Department is that Hoover is going to provide transportation for the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen school year with its transportation department, with its bus drivers. And Mr. Craig, Transportation Department, I do not see anything at this point that would change that, nothing. So, that, that is our position, there's no equivocating about that. Secondly, we are very sensitive to the timing aspect of it. And we, we hope that we'll be able to have information in a timely fashion. We don't know if that will be it, I don't know, but we know that that's important to everybody, bus drivers, students, everybody, and we're keeping that in mind. And finally, I'd say the dialogue from July to December was a rough and tumble dialogue, give and take throughout, but my belief from talking to all of y'all that we believe this school system is much better positioned to go forward in the future and tackle these challenges because of the input that we've gotten from all quarters of this community.
Absolutely.
So, they said that this claim was frustrated, the board was frustrated, we all were meeting difficult challenges earnestly, and I think we're better positioned now to resolve those issues.
Thank you. Mr. Swinney had to say? Thank you, Mr. Swinney.
And I'll try and smile, I get serious. But the boys that I am, young men that I am speaking out, the majority of them did go to college on football scholarships and could not find their way unless they were there. Also, and I'm smiling when I say this, I do find it interesting that we are now talking about implications to cutting portions of our budget, because that's what we've been talking about since July, is the implications.
Anyone else? You talk about, your name, please?
My name is Gianna Zelmer, I've been up here several times, I have a daughter at Berry. I am also a teacher in another district, so I understand a lot of the implications you are talking about. I am a teacher who took a pay cut rather than see students lose what I teach at a school. I have been told that our school, being a private school, has lost a lot of students because of things that have happened at our school. And that all of us may be looking for new positions. I understand that. I am a teacher who at my school teaches a hundred percent of the student body. I'm a drama teacher, but I would much rather see drama, theater, taken out of a high school and a middle school where it affects perhaps ten percent of the students than talk about cutting buses that affect fifty percent of the students. Please do not talk to us about implications as if we do not understand.
Excuse me, you seem a bit angry.
Gee, I wonder why.
Let me ask you one thing, okay? We are people that are trying to do the best that we possibly can, okay? I don't like the tone that you're taking with the board right now.
And I don't like the tone you're taking with me, or the tone you took on the day that you told parents who might not be able to ride the buses that perhaps they should get into a carpool. You do not understand. Now, you talked about a wide scope of people that you are going to get into discussions. Did any of you read the almost two thousand responses we got to our petition? That's an awful lot of input that we have all read, looked at, and understand.
Measure what input on my end?
Some of it, but about, if you would go back and look, about eighty percent of it were Hoover residents. Please, go look at the numbers, come back and correct me if I am wrong. We would like to know, how was Andy's trip to DC paid for? It has been intimated, the trip was voluntary. Did the school system pay for a voluntary trip? Mm-hmm, another answer we won't get. Who went with DC, who went to DC with Andy? Did Mr. Swinney go? Another answer we're not going to get. How many Hispanic children, could you tell us, have withdrawn from our schools since the buses were originally set, when the buses were originally cut? We would like to know the implications that your decisions made, you know? The implications of how many students we lost. Same thing African-American students. Regarding the recent E-Week article, who exactly decides what hardware is purchased by the school system? Has the poll been taken to gauge how many Dell Chromebooks to purchase? Why is our school system purchasing unproven devices? The Samsung Chromebooks had issues when they were first released. Do you realize that within a week of these Chromebooks being handed out to the students, all of the parents received an email saying how many Chromebooks had already been broken? One week? Is that the new technology that we're going to get? Stuff that is not going to stand up a week to the students that they're given to?
This Frasier, when Mr. Craig made his presentation about his trip to Washington, he made it clear that he was the only one that went on that trip and it was at board expense and it was board business and it was appropriate as far as the auditoriums were concerned.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Sabrina Lewis, mother of a ninth grader at Spain Park High School. I just want to say there's been a lot of talk about implications. I don't understand all the implications. I am here to offer myself to volunteer to engage in peaceful, productive dialogue as a member of the public and as a parent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Dennis Cruz, I still live in Southwood Highlands. Um, I am formally requesting an opportunity to join your committee that you're going to form. I'm part of the committee here that's been working an awful lot on ideas for how we can cut budget. I have a lot of experience working with multimillion-dollar budgets, creating them, managing them, and executing them. And I would give you that service.
Thank you. Any other public participations tonight?
Hi, my name is Paige Gass, um, I have two children, one at Greystone Elementary and one at Bear Middle School. I am thrilled and elated, I'm ecstatic that you guys decided to rescind your decision and the buses are reinstated. Thank you very much. What I'm about to say is not gonna be very popular with free the buses. I was a proponent of for save the buses, but I'm not for free the buses. Um, the information that I've read is, um, I'm not for, or do I support the cuts that have been recommended? I don't want any advanced placement, I don't want any extracurricular, I don't want any cuts made to the school system that will dumb down our schools for free buses. I don't want my property taxes raised, I pay a lot of property taxes as it is. There are people in our school systems who, in our school system who do not pay property taxes. I don't wanna put the bill for other people to pay or to have free, free bus service, but I'll pay. If you increase my property taxes, that never goes away. If I pay for the buses, that will eventually go away much sooner out of school. I realize that my, my opinion is not popular, but there are other people in the school system who don't want the schools dumbed down. You take away the good teachers, you take all the advantages that the school offers, they're dumbing down the school, people don't wanna move in, and you lose the quality of, of, um, education. So, thank you very much.
Excuse me, could you repeat your last name, I missed it, I'm sorry.
Gass, G-A-S-S-E-R.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. To balance the budget, there's gonna be pain. You can't avoid it. It cannot be avoided. Everyone's gonna have their sacred paths and programs that they wanna save, and I don't wanna dumb down the school either. I have a daughter in school, I want her to have every opportunity that she can have. But make no mistake, you can't balance that budget without some severe cuts. The best way is for us to try and do it as equitable as possible, so no one department has to bear it all, but some departments can bear more than others. We have to be smart enough to do it the right way, judicious way, so that we don't dumb down what we wanna have to do everywhere.
Can I just make one quick comment?
You can make the ten.
I just, what I'm saying is I don't want to dumb down the schools for free bus service.
Because buses are such a small percentage of the deficit.
I understand that.
Yeah, that, you know, if you, if you did away with the buses, you don't save a lot.
My question was, can you use that office?
Happy New Year.
Thank you, thank you.
And we appreciate your service. I'm Dan Fulton, I live on Alfred Avenue, and that's been my legal residence since nineteen fifty-six. I taught twenty-seven, graduated the University of Alabama, Crimson Tide, Roll Tide.
No comment.
And, uh, most of my family are Alvin supporters. But, uh, tough week. But anyway, um, it goes down about two plays, I think, of both games. But anyway, um, I wanted to say that I taught twenty-seven years at Birmingham City Schools, class eighteen at Jackson Olend High School, our Teacher of the Year, math teacher from Jackson Olend this year. Uh, Mayor Coachman from Fairfield, a former student, Jackson Olend. Uh, Bernard Kincaid, Jackson Olend. We had a lot of coworkers, Mr. Murphy's familiar with that, that I worked with his grandmother at Jackson Olend High School. Um, and, uh, we worked Jackson Olend very closely with Holy Family, which I think he attended. But, uh, I just wanted to say, of course, that we're in an atmosphere with taxpayers and the public expect transparency and accountability. And there are times, of course, when we have negotiations with a vendor, that, that's, while that's going on, you can't release all of the info, specific information, and that's understandable. But anything that we can do to enhance and improve transparency and accountability, I think is going to bring more support from the general community. Uh, the group that I've been participating, participating with, with Ms., uh, with, uh, various groups here, is, um, and the study that we started was really, um, motivated by Dr. Weiss at the State Department of Education, because he encouraged, uh, those who had talked to him to pursue that study, and it's been very difficult getting the numbers and the data so that you really can make an accurate analysis. But that's what we've been trying to do, and as much data as you can provide would be very helpful. Now, uh, Mr. Craig, did, have you discussed your study with Dr. Weiss?
I have not.
Right, and who will design the study?
Uh, that, that will start, or has started, I designed, I'll be part of that. Very spokes here would be part of that, template will be provided to the board. Uh, at that point, certainly become public discussion.
Do you have, is there an outside consulting firm helping with this?
Uh, I'm meeting with a person tomorrow that has experience in the process, has administered that kinds of processes across other districts, uh, to, to, uh, begin to plan that.
Right, right. In regard to the Ustream, I know the Mobile County Schools Ustreamed their meetings, I've been following them, and the State Department of Education Ustreams their meetings. I would really like you to try to do that, because some of us have health issues. Some people are homebound, but they'd like to follow the schools and what's going on. So I would seriously, uh, request that you see if you can't set that up. It's, I don't think it's very costly. In fact, we restreamed, did the Ustream with the meeting that we had yesterday. Uh, and if you go to hooverfacts.wordpress.com, hooverfacts.wordpress.com, you can see the Ustream and also the basic outline of some considerations that we have brought up. And we call them suggestions and considerations, because again, we just do not have some data where you can make a definite conclusion. Now, um, I was a big Bear Bryant fan, I have a channel YouTube, whatever my students did with him at Parker High School in nineteen seventy-three. And, so I'm, I'm not against, uh, football or any sports. And I think Hoover schools, I would like them to have everything. I was in swimming and athletics at the University of Alabama. And, and when I was living in Minnesota for a while, we had a short course Olympic pool at the high school, at the middle school, I was seventh grade. My first period class was swimming. I think there should be such a pool at Hoover High School at Spain Park. But now, we're probably talking about the future, because now, we're not there. Once we can get a revenue stream, Mr. Lida can get us some more money from maybe the city council, or maybe we have some generous people donate, that's probably not realistic. Uh, in fact, in Tuscaloosa, the first auditorium was a gift of Jack Warner, a Gulf State paper. And I worked in the locker room, and the, and the coach, Foster, said, "Don't you ever ask him for identification." So I always provided him the towel and the soap, and he went right on through. Um, but, and then one final, uh, comment regarding to stipends. When I was at Jackson Olend High School, I was department head, I was paid fifty dollars a month. That was my stipend, and it was fixed. If my salary went up, the stipend stayed fifty dollars. Now, I was the PTA sponsor at the school. My stipend was zero. It didn't increase, it stayed zero. I sponsored a club, a video club. That's how we have videos from nineteen seventy-three up into the eighties on my YouTube. The stipend for the video club, although I spent my own money, was zero. The gym, we had only one gym. So the girls' basketball team would practice, you know this, Mr. Murphy. They would practice from three to five. So the boys had a study hall, I supervised that study hall for the basketball team, so that then they went on the gym at five. My stipend for that, zero. Now, why did I do that? Because it was part of doing the job of a quality teacher. So when you review those budgets, I would look at the stipends. As much as I love football, I do not believe you need a, all the position coaches that were showing up in the data that I, that I'm seeing. We didn't have them at Jackson Olend, we had some, I think we did pretty well. And, uh, so those are just some thoughts I wanted to share with you, and we appreciate your service. But again, you asked for it, and you hear some of this anger, criticism, it's part of the job. Some days when I was teaching, I had some parents who were very irate about something. And I've had to tackle students who were attacking another student. Got socked in the face one of the encounters, but that's part of the job, it's not easy. Thank you.
Arnold, Senator, I'd like to, uh, correct a common misconception. If you know anything at all about the structure of taxes, real estate taxes, in the state of Alabama, there are four classes. Those of us who live in, who own condominium units or single-family homes, our homes are taxed on the basis of ten percent of the assessed valuation. Apartment houses, multi, multi-family structures are a different class. They're taxed at the basis of twenty percent of the assessed valuation. Now, I don't know too many landlords who are philanthropists to their tenants. But certainly, the taxes that they pay, which are proportionally higher than what we pay individually on, on our self-owned homes, is factored into the rent and still gives the owner of the complex a profit. So, there is nobody attending the school for free. Everybody, every piece of property, unless it's owned by a tax-exent organization such as a church, is taxed. Utilities are taxed, railroads are taxed, timberlands are taxed, so there is a tax. Now, separate question. We had, in addition to Hoover High School, how was that funded?
Probably, technically, probably a mixture, I haven't looked it up, Mr. Sweeney, probably a mixture between public school funds and local funds.
Was there, uh, a bond issue or a warrant issue or, uh, additional monies?
It was out of, it was out of fund balance, uh, again, recollection, I think there was some accumulated public school funds. It was, it was not funded by law.
So, in other words, uh, that would be an example of something that was funded from the monies that we received as part of the one percent sales tax. But that was the purpose of it, was for school construction, renovation?
We could trace them back to the beginning ledger, but, but, uh, my recollection is technically that money was going, uh, paid out, that sort of, um, in the previous year, in, in two thousand. I'm trying to look it up, I'm, I'm going off recollection. There's no, that money, that addition was not financed by law.
Okay, thank you. Uh, by the way, one other point. Everything that the committee did comes out as suggestion, as things to be looked at. We're not saying cut here, cut there, it's, we're saying everything should be looked at. Things should be prioritized, because you cannot reduce a deficit. And it, essentially, if we keep on the same path we're on now, we're gonna have a deficit every year until the cash runs out. So, there, and every individual area that will be looked at has its champions, has people who will live and die to keep the status quo. So there's going to be disappointment along the way if this deficit is to be tackled. It doesn't have to be all eradicated in one year, but we certainly have to make significant changes before the next budget is introduced. So, yeah, we're, we're taking a look at, uh, at enrollments. Typically, enrollments are increasing each year, I think we only had one year, and that was right after, uh, that was right about the time that we had the last task force. But otherwise, the enrollments have been up. If we increase the class size by one student per, we don't have to add teachers. The idea is expenditures that you don't have to make represent savings in much the same way. That cuts that you make, either way, it, it, it affects in a, in a positive way the reduction of the deficit. So it's, it's things that we still have to look at. I know we've already had to be started in the budget process for, for this coming year, at least at the school and department level, and that will be moving forward, and decisions to be got to staff and, uh, typically occur around April. So there's not much time to be, uh, be dealing with.
They are, your example, one student per classroom is precisely why the classroom sizes are what they are, and we're down one hundred teachers over the last five years. It's not, I mean, been going up.
Uh, I, I, I would love to see the, uh, the data on that, okay? Yes, we did reduce something like a hundred or a hundred and ten teacher positions as a result of the task force, which tied into increased class size. But, the following year, we increased the number of teachers.
So we added three hundred kids.
But gee.
They don't all come in one grade, they all come in one classroom?
Are, are, are there, are there other ways of tackling it? Perhaps?
This kind of staff, no. That's what they've been doing for the last five years.
Perhaps, perhaps in another period of teaching per day.
Perhaps, perhaps starting early? Perhaps starting early?
Right, there, there are many potential solutions, and this is where, you see, what frustrates the public is not finding out about what's gonna happen until the recommendation is made by the superintendent to the board. This would be the benefit of work sessions. This would be the benefit of dialogue. We can't wait until this, you know... We can't wait until this, you know, and the thing is, if I were on the board, I would be agreeing with 95% of the recommendations that the superintendent makes to the board. And I'd be open to listening about the other 5%. So, it's not that, you know, the board is doing wrong in approving the recommendations of the superintendent. But in all the time that I've been here, coming to board meetings, there was one instance where a recommendation was tabled for a month, which you and Mr. Fraser were part of. And one dissension on a vote, and that was by Mr. Murphy, and that was with regards to school funding. It's hard to understand how there could be all of these unanimous votes. There's got to be, somebody says, "Maybe we're moving a little too fast. Maybe we should table something, have some more discussion, and then bring it back up on the table." That's what we're not seeing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Just now, I was going to make a point. The Alabama Education Association, I feel like there's a rhythm to my speaking in that I always seem to be last, and there's a reason, because I don't come prepared to speak. I mean, I generally listen and respond to things that I hear. I think the thing I want to do is thank you first of all for the decision last month. I hope being here on my time can make a decision by students, but on behalf of the employees of Alabama Education Association, as well as the other people in the whole community, I thank you for consideration of that. Specifically tonight, I know you keep hearing the headline blabber, "We'll always pay, we'll always pay," anything that comes down to finances related to the supplement. That was the top of the list. I know there were other suggestions offered by the group and other areas that I would like to explore, but what's going to catch the headline is the teacher pay and supplements. And you, of course, know, I mean, I'm their voice, that's who I'm here to speak for, and so that's what I'm going to do. I know that many years ago, just doing research today, there was a great deal of effort that went into creating supplement schedules that you have. And that was with the input of Alabama Education Association, in my understanding, and felt like it was a step in the right direction. And over the years, the AA has worked to move education in this state forward, so that as a nation, we're recognized, not at the bottom of the list that comes out, that says this is what I'm going to do. And one of those things to improve has been teacher pay, because teachers are professionals, and they go to school, they educate themselves, they continue to grow year after year through furthering degrees, through continuing education. And so, in order to get professionals, you have to pay on a professional level, and I think that the university committed for doing that, and that kind of sets you apart from other districts in the state. I believe there are people in other parts of the state who would say, "That's the model, that's the model that we want to follow." With that said, I understand that there are financial issues, and that will have to be looked at. And I know that as a board, that you're going to look at teacher pay, you're going to look at all other aspects of the program, and I respect that. I also come, as I offer to the superintendent, he knows that I'm always willing to sit on any committee, to meet, to talk about, to offer what resources we have as an organization to be involved with that, and I just want to publicly do that tonight, too. But I just think it has to be said that just because teacher pay gets the big headline at L.A.L. dot com, or because supplements catch the million-dollar, you know, dollar mark beside it, that's not where you're going to make your biggest difference. Because I've said it before, and I'll say it again, the people that work for Hoover City Schools are what makes Hoover City Schools great. They set it aside. And one reason that you've been able to do that, to attract the quality, is because you offer a little extra, you set your programs aside from others, and I think that that has made a difference. And it will make a difference in the future, recognizing that there is a financial element that must be dealt with, and we acknowledge that. So, thank you for looking at those things and being open, for setting up committees and the process that you're taking. Work session, I mean, I just can't, it makes me smile to think about it, not because I'm looking forward to three hours, but as someone said, maybe at some point it'll get down, it'll just be something that happens, it'll be short, move through the inflammation, but I think it's going to go a long way in transparency and dialogue. So, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Ma'am?
Hey, this is not about buses, and it's not about taxes, and it's not about funding. I just feel compelled to make a statement based on some of the earlier comments about my role at Trace Crossings. First of all, because I know how social media, and I know how things get tweeted out, and I know right now in that Trace Crossing community, there's some concern. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Craig for giving me the opportunity to go to Trace Crossings, and I want to thank the board for allowing me that opportunity to be at Trace Crossings. And I want to assure you that I'm there voluntarily. I'm there because I want to be there, and I do not intend to leave Trace Crossing. Thank you.
Ms. Barbara told me the other day I could go down there with a truck.
No, what I've said to him.
Something like that.
No, what I've said to him was that the next time I leave Trace Crossings, if I leave Trace Crossings without being my decision to leave Trace Crossing, it'll be in a pine box feet close. That's where I'll leave Trace Crossing.
Ms. Barbara, understand you have a new grandbaby on the line?
I do, I do. And, well, rumors, that does not mean I'm retired. They don't even live anywhere closer than here, so you got, there we go.
Any other public participation tonight? Thank you for everyone's input. February the 3rd, 2014, at 5:30 here in the central office. And then, we will have a work session on Thursday, January the 23rd, at 3:00 6:00 PM, also here in the central office. If there's no further business, this evening is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.